Rebecca, are we good on Zoom?
Okay.
Okay. Great. Okay. If this starts to bug anybody, we can close the door. Just gonna keep it open for air for now. Okay. I now call to order the regular meeting of the Belvedere Planning Commission. Do we need to do a roll call now? Or can we?
I'll do a roll call now. Commissioner Watson. President, Chair Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Seidel. Commissioner Bochos. And Commissioner Shinsky.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. The open forum is an opportunity for any citizen to briefly address the planning commission on any matter that does not appear on the agenda. Comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Matters that appear to warrant commission consideration may be agendized for further discussion at a later meeting. Is there anyone in the audience? Or on Zoom that would like to speak during the open forum?
I see no one on Zoom. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none. Moving on to reports. Are there any commissioners or staff who wish to provide a report on any standing committees?
I'll provide a report.
Great.
Earlier this month, I attended the Planning Commissioner Academy in, which was held in Santa Rosa, put on by the California League of Cities. And part of it was ethics training and I got a nice yellow certificate suitable for framing. So I'm well advised of many things that planning commissioners should be. There were some interesting sessions on housing in California, the housing element and various other planning issues. And I also bumped into Commissioner Shinsky there.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of items that are considered to be non-controversial. Unless any item is specifically removed by any member of the council staff or public, the consent calendar will be adopted by one motion. Items removed will be considered in the sequence they appear on the agenda. Would any members of the planning commission like to remove an item from the consent calendar or on Zoom? No, okay.
Sorry, there's no one on.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please, to adopt the items listed on the consent calendar?
I make a motion to adopt the items on the consent calendar.
And I will second that motion.
Do we need to roll call for this?
Yes. Commissioner Watson.
Hi.
Commissioner Seidel.
Hi.
Commissioner Bochos.
Hi.
Commissioner Shinsky.
Hi.
And Chair Johnson.
Hi. So moving on to the public hearing, I'd like to open the meeting of the public hearing for 312 Beach Road and ask for a staff report. And after the staff presents their report, the commission will have an opportunity to ask questions pertaining to the project or the staff report. And we'll hold any comments until later in the meeting.
Thank you Chair Johnson and members of the planning commission. For your consideration, this evening is an application for design review to install 358 square feet of floor area at 312 Beach Road. The subject parcel is 12,000 square feet and developed with a single-family dwelling and detached garage on the eastern side of Belvedere Island. The parcel abuts single-family homes to the north, south and west, and Belvedere Cove to the east. On December 17, 2024, the planning commission granted variance approval to allow portions of the existing structure below the garage to remain within the side yard setback. At the same, at the same December meeting, the planning commission denied the applicant's request to install 358 square feet of new floor area within the structure's building walls due to insufficient details for the proposed floor plans. The applicant is requesting designer view to convert 358 square feet of unfinished space into new floor area. The existing storage structure contains 188 square feet of conditioned space and the proposed project would create 546 square feet of total floor area. The project does not propose altering the structure's exterior, which is comprised of dark blue shingle siding, white trim and a single downlight at the entry. The commission may wish to consider whether the windows on the southern elevation are in conformance with the designer review criteria as they relate to the privacy. And whether the project gives consideration to the privacy of adjacent buildings. The commission may require the southern facing windows to be removed or relocated as a condition of approval. The project is exempt from CEQA. And as detailed in the resolution, staff finds the project complies with the zoning ordinance and general plan policies and recommends planning commission adopt the resolution for approval. Thank you and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Okay. You have a question?
Oh, okay. Well, I do, I do have a, I do have a question, but I'm not sure if you're the right person to, to, to answer it. On the plans and in the, and in the staff report, the southern facing windows were indicated, were indicated as existing no change. But when I looked at them, they, they appear to be sort of rough, roughed, roughed in. So I don't know when they were existing from or when there was a no change from. So could, do you know? What's the date from which there was no change? I guess is my question.
I don't know the exact date from which there was no change, but it was when the exemption was approved a few years ago to build those walls flush with the upper garage. And I can look up quickly when it was finalized, but it, they've been like that for a few years.
I might ask a follow-up if I can. That wall, I think it's actually.
Is your mic on?
I think so. Is this better? Is the, is, so that wall was approved and is to code, there was questions from the neighbors who mentioned and it did seem to be different than the, the cladding on the other three elevations. I believe they mentioned it was plywood. I don't know what material it was exactly, but it didn't appear to be totally complete.
That wall has been finalized, yes, and is complete.
Yeah.
Yes, has been signed off by the building official and planning as it's a final approval.
Okay. Okay, well, why don't we, let's invite the applicant up to speak or I guess on Zoom. If he wishes. And then we can, we'll have a chance to ask more questions after he shares about his project.
Dave, you can speak if you'd like.
Yes, thank you. Thank you commissioners. I've got the submittal if we want to look at that. If I can share it. Got several windows open. So this was the, this is the guest suite submittal. That correlates to the design review. They were talking about tonight, so. Existing site, existing residence, existing garage. Switching to the floor plans, these are the proposed interior improvements to that space. These windows are here, this wall is here, the whole entire shell is complete. And this was the area of the variance. At the last planning commission. For this project. When Sammy was going over the numbers of square feet, there was an original floor area under this, so the net. Excuse me, to bring it up to 546 is this white area. Right here. This is kind of a repeat of the same elevations we had before. This is a little obscure, but the other window is behind the hedge on this side. They are, this wall is complete and this was part of an exemption from 22. Where these locations were approved. So glad to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah. Hi, so this is, this is Jenna Watson. When I, when I went by the, the house, and I apologize, the last time that I went by your house, I, I went in the, you know, down, down your stair, down, I guess the, the owner stairs. And then sort of the, the main, the main front, front door. But it does look like the outside of the southern wall is just plywood and it doesn't have the, the shingles on it.
The lower portion of that, it's kind of hard to see in this photo. This is the stepped concrete retaining wall. And these, so there was no substrate really to put the shingles over, so it was just painted.
Got it.
This here, so starting at this line and this actually on the right side of this window, this is the wood frame portion. So that's why there's no shingles on that.
Oh, got it.
It was a triangle.
Right, so it's, so it's not plywood even though from the, from the street, it looks like plywood. It's just, it's.
Correct. It's, it's, it's concrete. That's been stuccoed to match other site walls and then painted to match the color of the shingles.
Got it. And then I have another, another question about a large concrete. Looks like a pylon that is jutting out from the side of the house and you can't see it in your photo because it's, it's where the vines are. But it's, it's jutting out farther than, than, than the wall, almost to the fence between between the two houses.
Right, I believe it's, it's just below this.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, and I think honestly, I'm not sure why that's there, but at a previous point in time. There, well, the original, the original construction of this, there was a stair going down that side. And I don't know if they intended to re-put the stair down prior to, you know, changing direction. That's my only idea as to what that was. It wasn't on our plan, so.
Right, and it's, it's not on any of the plans. Which is why I, I wanted to, wanted to highlight it.
Can I just, on this topic, isn't there a, a utilities easement that precludes anything from going in that space?
I'm not clear on what, where exactly she's talking about. I think we're looking at the floor area for this project, not necessarily.
No, I know, I just, yeah, there's. I, I just, I'm clarifying that there is nothing that should be in there, right? Is that right? There is a store easement or a utilities easement and not side yard setback?
There is, I know when this original, when the retaining wall was put up, there was a sewer basically diagonal through the wall and subsequent to that, Scott worked with the utility, relocated that to be in line with the basically parallel to the property line. Because it was inside his building. From the street. And I, I don't have any paperwork on that, but I believe they adjusted whatever that easement was to match the new location. But yes, there is an easement. Down the side yard.
Okay, I only mention that because you were describing stairs potentially being put in and my understanding is that nothing can go in that side yard setback, so. It is a separate issue, not before us tonight, but maybe something that can be looked at, that's a building department can check that? Okay.
Certainly.
Yeah, there's, there's no intent to put one there. So it's just, I think, like I said, the previous iteration and original condition was a stair there and I don't know if they were considering putting it back to the original. But for whatever reason, there is a piece of concrete there.
I have a question. Is there any exterior lighting planned?
No. Not in this, all the shell of it was previously constructed and with the lights, like there's a oh, there's this light and they're actually oops, sorry. The DR, original DR, this wall was set back a little bit and there was a light that matched the upper lights, but for whatever reason, that wasn't put in and we had we're not intending on putting it in at this phase.
Okay, so no, no new exterior light, lighting proposed?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. There are other questions for the applicant?
Could I just ask a clarifying question about the context of the foundation structure? So there is foundation structure, it predates anything that we need or have before us. It can be handled totally separately by the building department and has no context for what we're looking at tonight.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Rebecca, I've got a question for you. The windows on the south side. Are, have those already been approved or are they?
Yes, those windows have been approved. What's under review tonight is the floor area. Converting that space that isn't considered floor area by definition under the Belvedere Municipal Code into floor area.
Just the floor area.
Correct. Take in mind that the designer view findings have to be made. And if there are impacts to privacy or mass and bulk or context of the neighborhood, you can take those windows into consideration.
Yeah, so for additional context, the windows were approved when the area was largely storage unit. Now that it's been converted to living space, we may want to view those in a different context. Yeah. Okay, so if there are no more questions, we will open up public comment. There are any comments from members of the public? This can just help inform our conversation and deliberation. Do we have anyone here or on Zoom?
I see no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. So we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Jenna, would you like to start us off?
Sure. So to me, they're in, and the reason why I'm, I was asking about the windows is exactly the point that, that you just made. Chairman Johnson is, is that you know, until, until we have had these plans, it was uncertain as to what the use of this space was going to be and therefore, you know, whether there were going to be lights on in the evening, whether there was going to be just storage and, I don't know, lawn, lawn mowers. Things that, things that wouldn't affect, affect the neighbors and while it's true that, and you can see it in the, in the photo, that one of the, one of the windows is largely screened by, by plants right now. That the other window pretty much looks directly into the, into the, the front door area of the, of the, of the neighbors. And you know, the, the two the two buildings are very, very close together.
I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner Watson, is your mic on? And if it is, can you bring it closer?
It is.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And so I am, I am, I am concerned about, about privacy, both the building placement and window size and the placement. I think given that this is going to be living space now. It's not necessarily selected to give consideration to the privacy of the adjacent buildings, especially given how close together the two buildings are.
Great, thank you.
That's my only concern.
Okay, thank you. Alex?
So in our previous review of this project. My concern was that they wanted to put a floor in, but there wasn't any indication of what the use of the space was going to be and I believe that the applicant has now shown us a, you know, adequately detailed plan about what the use of the space is going to be and so I generally find the application acceptable. The, as regards the issue that Commissioner Watson brought up, I I guess I, I don't know if it's really an issue. I don't know that we've heard a concern from the neighbor. Most of us have windows along our property lines, so I'm inclined to make the findings for this project as it's presented tonight unless we heard some indication that another individual neighboring property owner has a concern on that front.
I think there, just to clarify, there is a concern.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, about the windows.
From the neighbor.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Missed that. Thank you.
Is that in record? That we, I mean, we, we would have hopefully had a chance to respond or see that.
We haven't not received comments from the neighbor in writing. I had a conversation with the neighbor.
Okay, thank you, Alex. Don?
Thank you. It's a I guess I would have liked to know that there is a question from, from the neighbors, but regardless, to my mind, the, the question of the windows. You know, this is about, I see the question for tonight being kind of just the formalizing of the square footage. Separate from the formalizing of it, we all know spaces can get used in all sorts of ways over time. To my mind, the the question about when to deal with windows might be at an earlier point than we're at tonight. Other than that, within the, kind of the four corners of the application here, whether to formalize the extra square footage, I think I'll be able to make the findings.
Okay, thank you. Justin?
Having spoken with the neighbors and understanding their concern and the fact that the building was constructed without the use indicated. And that there is concern with the neighbors. I think for me, not really being able to see and plan really clearly the relationship between the adjacent property and the proposed project. I don't think I can make the findings. I cannot make the findings.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I, I'm in agreement with some of what's been said already. I think I appreciate that the applicant has come back with clear, clear plans this time around. It always helps us make more informed and fair decisions when we can see and understand the full use of the space. And I am also in agreement about the windows. I think that now that this is really going to be used as a sort of living area, bedroom. The two windows along the right side really do pose privacy issues for neighbors as they sit in the setback very close to the property line and are looking right into their home, so. It wasn't really an issue before when the space was empty and storage and had no use as of when we last reviewed it. I think now that it's going to be conditioned living space that as a condition of approval, those two windows should be removed. I also think you could cut out four interior lights. On the right side, two, you've got two right above those two windows. You have a lot of lights in there and I think just taking those two out and then the two that are sitting right behind the sort of glass door as you walk in. So again, I, I can support this project with the removal of the two windows. And can you clarify for me if we can even comment on interior lighting or if that's not a?
We cannot. We can comment on it, but.
We can ask. So if you would reconsider those lights that especially the two that are along the glass on the inside, that would be great. So we have can we get a motion on this matter, please?
Can I make a motion to approve?
I don't think that
With.
Can I just clarify something quickly? Sorry, just one second. If a commissioner could not make a finding, I think by definition, they can't make the motion. Is that correct?
Well, I think if he's heard comments from his other commissioners and possibly has changed his mind, I don't know, but I would assume if these a commissioner is making a motion to approve something, perhaps their mind has been changed based on the conversation, but we can ask Justin.
So let's just clarify that first, so.
I'm gonna let it not be complicated and let someone else make the motion.
Okay, well, now that you've heard the full kind of deliberation and commentary on the project, have you changed your perspective on approval?
I have changed my perspective on approval. With the removal of the windows, I would be able to make the findings.
Okay. So I think that we have three commissioners who would support removal of the windows.
And, and I will second that, Ashley.
Okay, so. Four. Okay.
Just to be repetitive, so the motion is to approve the project with the condition of approval that the windows on the south side are removed.
Correct.
And seconded by Commissioner Shinsky.
Did we get a, a formal motion though? Do we need it?
Yes, we got a motion, so I'll take the role.
Sufficient, okay.
Commissioner Watson?
Approved with the condition of the removal of the windows on the south side.
Commissioner Seidel?
Yes.
Commissioner Shinsky?
Approve.
Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you to the applicant.
Sorry, was that? I know I'm probably out of line, but is that? There was no negotiation on that whatsoever as to that comment? Considering we just received.
Yeah, we've moved on to the next item.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on to the next item for public hearing, I'd like to open the public hearing for 51 Peninsula and ask for a staff report.
Thank you again, Chair Johnson and members of the planning commission. For your consideration this evening is an application for design review, demolition, variance and revocable license to construct a new single family home at 51 Peninsula Road. The subject parcel is on a relatively flat 8,900 square foot lot in the R1L zoning district. The site is developed with a 2,748 square foot two-story residence and attached garage. The site abuts single family homes to the north, south and east and Belvedere Lagoon to the west. The project proposes to demolish the existing home and, and construct a new 4,000 to, I'm sorry, to demolish the existing 4,282 square foot residence and construct a new 2,748 square foot, single family home and attached garage. The residence is proposed to be set back five feet, one inch from the front and left side property lines, 20 feet from the right side property line and 27 feet from the rear property line. It is staff's understanding that the applicant intends to shift the home to the north and increase the setback farther from the left side yard, which the applicant will provide in detail during their presentation tonight. A sheet showing the proposed changes have been included on the dais and the back counter. Other associated site improvements include a new stone privacy wall at the front property line, a 10-foot tall wood trellis at the southern and western sides of the residence, a new swimming pool at the rear and dock repair and expansion. Per FEMA regulations and city's floodplain management ordinance, a new single family home in the AE flood zone must be raised to base flood elevation plus one foot of freeboard. Here, the finished floor will be raised five to six feet above existing grade to conform with floodplain requirements. For structures which undergo a substantial improvement, height is measured from the base flood elevation plus one foot freeboard. The maximum allowable height for these structures is 22 feet. Additionally, at no point can any structure in this zone exceed 29 feet from existing grade. Here, the proposed garage and residence would be 12 feet tall from base flood elevation plus one foot freeboard. From existing grade, the garage would be 17 feet and two inches and at the rear of the house would be 18 feet, two inches. Based on conversations with the applicant and with the neighbors, the height of the home is proposed to be lowered as well. Facing the Belvedere Lagoon, the project proposes three eight-foot tall sliding glass doors, all varying in width from eight feet, 18 feet, 10 inches and 22 feet. Facing 49 Peninsula Road and the left side of the residence, the project proposes three eight-foot tall by two-foot, eight-inch wide casement windows and three, three-foot tall by three-foot, nine-inch wide fixed clear story windows. The sill heights of the garage and bathroom windows would be approximately 10 and a half feet above existing grade. And facing 53 Peninsula Road, the right side of the home includes one three-foot wide by eight-foot tall glass door and an outdoor barbecue. The project proposes split-faced stone veneer building walls in Hillsborough color, stained wood accents and eaves, bronze-colored aluminum windows and doors and a stone veneer sight wall in Sonoma Buff color. The applicant has indicated to staff that a different material for the front yard fence would be proposed as well. The project proposes 67 exterior lights throughout the property consisting of path lights, step lights, wall sconces and downlights. The project proposes to plant three olive trees along Peninsula Road, which are listed to grow to a maximum height of 30 feet tall and three palm trees at the rear yard, which are listed to grow to 30 feet tall. Additional landscaping would include a row of potocarpus listed to go grow 15 feet along the left side property line and an assortment of shrubs and perennials to five feet in height at the rear and right side of the property. Creeping fig will be planted on the stucco columns as well. The project proposes to remove five trees on site, including two palms, one magnolia and two unidentified trees. Earlier this year, the applicant received approval from the city manager to remove a 36-inch in diameter cedar tree from city property on Peninsula Road. The applicant requests a revocable license for private improvements within the Peninsula Road right of way. These include new landscaping consisting of three olive trees and smaller shrubs, a new concrete driveway and a new walkway. The applicant requests a variance to allow the trellis to encroach into the 15-foot rear yard setback and to allow a swimming pool taller than four feet to encroach into the rear yard setback. Granting of a variance is appropriate only if the criteria under the municipal code section 1984010 can be met. It is staff's understanding that the applicant would be, would set the trellis and pull back within the buildable envelope and remove the variance requests. Staff has received six letters of support and three letters sharing concerns regarding the project. Neighbors across the street at 58 and 60 Peninsula Road had concerns with the height and mass of the garage. 58 Peninsula Road also shared concerns regarding the height of the trellis on the right side of the home. The adjacent neighbor to the left at 49 Peninsula Road shared concerns regarding the mass of the new residents. It is staff's understanding that through the changes, which will be shown by the applicant tonight, the neighbor at 49 Peninsula Road would be able to support this project. The project is exempt from CEQA. And as detailed in the draft resolution, staff recommends approval of the project with the proposed changes to the side yard setback and the removal of the variances. Thank you, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Do any commissioners have questions for staff?
I just have one question. One question about the casement windows. Is there anything related to the, are they full height casement windows? Is there anything related to fall hazard or anything that just might come up later on that we would want to look at for those windows? Are they full height? I just heard eight foot inches.
The building code would not allow a fall height problem with a window. So I think, you know, in terms of it being a casement, I actually don't, I think they're in the primary bedroom. And so I don't think they would be allowed for the building code if they're a problem.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff? Don? Okay. Okay. My question got answered. Thank you, Sammy. So now I'd like to invite the applicant to come up and speak about their project. So please come up to the podium. And after the applicant speaks, the commission will have a chance to ask the applicant any clarifying questions about their project.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Tom Price. My wife and I, Gwen, have lived on the lagoon since 1977. This will be our fourth, fourth property and we live immediately next to the project we're proposing. As a little background, when the folks that live there passed away, we decided to purchase the property with the idea of being that first it could provide an ADU for our future to stay there forever. And secondly, is for our family in the future. So that's kind of some of the background. We initially started looking at the, the cost of building. Belvedere has a premium. And we, we got some original estimates and I started looking and saying, how can we do this better? What's going to be the future of building? After a great deal of research, we decided that a luxury modular factory-built home would be an excellent solution. We visited numerous homes, Martis Camp up in Napa and came to the conclusion that it was really an excellent solution. With that, we've developed the design and I want to introduce our team. Toby Long, who is our architect and lead on this, his assistant Abby Whitman and our landscape architect Howard Formby. So with that, I'll turn it to Toby.
Do you want to, do you want to sit down? Are you okay?
No, I'm okay. I'm good. Commissioner, staff, thank you so much for having us here tonight. This is always a important milestone for projects. We're super honored to be working with Tom and Gwen and to be working within the city of Belvedere. And we look forward to moving the project forward, hopefully this evening. I think if I go to view. I think there's a way to fill the screen. Under view. There you go. Full screen mode. Control L. Okay, sweet. Great. Okay, commissioners, thank you to Sammy who's done a great job in presenting the project and a lot of the details and statistics. I won't belabor that this evening. As you can see from the project elevations and renderings, we're proposing a very handsome, authentic, transitional, contemporary inspired building that I think Tom and Gwen have been conceiving of for a very long time. We're really excited to help them realize this vision to create another home for their family on the street and to continue their residency in the long run, multi-generational here in the city of Belvedere. There we go. So as Sammy introduced, this property is near the end of Peninsula and obviously has a south-facing facade towards the lagoon, which creates clearly the intent of a lot of the layout strategies for the project. Here's the project site again. You can see the outline of the existing house, which is standing, but in a bit of disrepair, to put it lightly. The garage is located, and he's the mouse here, maybe, yeah, the garage of the existing houses sort of up in here. We're kind of reusing that same location and curb cut. And then the property kind of stretches across. You can see the almost zero line setback that happens at the front of the existing house. As Sammy presented, the property is about 2,700 square feet, including the garage. We've got about 2,000 square feet of living area and about a 600 square foot garage area. The property is currently designed to be oriented towards the northeast corner of the site, which preserves kind of the open space around the south and the west. This is Tom and Gwen's property over here on the left-hand side. So for obvious reasons, we're interested in creating the connection between the two properties to allow for the family activities to happen on both lots. You'll also note that the, the dock and the setback line around the lagoon side have this kind of funny shape, which was originally driving some of the motivations for our variance requests. The setback being taken, of course, from the existing seawall, which bends in here on the west-hand side and kind of connects over a little closer to the rear property line over here on the east. The property, the plan for the project is relatively straightforward. The garage over here, again, kind of in a similar location as the existing house on the east side. We really were careful and deliberate, you know, and creating a very delineated entry. This sort of characterizes this fairly minimal facade and, you know, leads us up to an entry hall that essentially takes you back to the living spaces, which are at the rear of the house. And again, organized to the south to face the lagoon and on the west side for some of the open spaces. The project also incorporates, although it hasn't really been talked about, two additional spaces for additional residential uses on the property, which is the ADU, which is here in the front. This is a 615 square foot ADU space and a JADU, which is about 300 square feet here in the middle. And this serves the ongoing needs of the Price family and the ability to have additional residences on this, on the site for a variety of different reasons. On the east side of the property is the primary suite. Let's let me just select that here. So there's a little entry point for your closet bathroom and a primary suite, which leads out to a deck and a small therapeutic pool and hot tub, which are again on the lagoon-facing side of the property. As Sammy identified, one of the sort of challenging characteristics of the property and a requirement for the site is to meet FEMA's requirements for flood resiliency. So the blue line here represents our base flood elevation plus the 12 inches of freeboard, which is the elevation of the finished floor itself, about five feet off the ground. The house is elevated and we have obligations to make sure that those spaces are free of mechanical equipment and other things that could be damaged by rising seawater. The front elevation of the building is, as I said, characterized by a very simple architectural pastiche using stone as the primary building material, a clearly articulated front entryway with nice wood door flanked by two side lights. And then the ADU element, which also fronts the street, although under a different set of considerations, does characterize the front of the building and repeats the theme of the sort of taller rectangular windows that we're using throughout the rest of the property. You can sort of see a little bit at the edge here, this red line, which represents the shape of the existing building. And so perhaps most importantly, the area over here on the left-hand side shows the massing of the current garage relative to the proposed garage location. So fairly close in width, a little taller actually than the current proposal. Here is the west facade. So this is facing Tom and Gwen's current property. We have a sort of access point which leads up to the covered spaces, which are defined by this very authentic trellis structure, some kind of classical column elements that will be cementitious to match the stone. And the entirety of this outdoor area is surrounded by a planter wall. So we've got a soft edge around the perimeter of the outdoor spaces. Again, on the east side, as Sammy described, kind of a variety of window shapes. The windows that are casement, should we encounter building department level considerations, would be opening restricted. They are not egress windows because we have a sliding glass door, which allows from egress from that bedroom space. So that'll be a technical element that's worked out with both the window vendor as well as the building department. And a variety of other utilities that are kind of happening up here along the front part of this facade. So some areas for trash and utilities and such. Some flood vents you can see in here to allow the floodwaters to move in and through the building without generating additional hydrostatic pressure on the foundation. The rear facade is characterized by the large openings, as Sammy described, again, mostly the west side of the property. Again, mostly the west side of the project is screened and shaded by the overhanging trellis areas. You can see the planter windows here. Here's the pool, a little bit of an infinity edge was the plan to let that kind of spill over and land in kind of a similar basin as the adjoining sections. Again, the outline of the shape of the existing building being shown here. Howard, I don't know if it's worth a few words on the landscape side, but Howard may want to say a few things about how the landscape's working. I know we're getting close on time, but I'm sure we can have an extra minute.
Yeah, I could take, thank you for having us. Landscape generally is defined, the three olive trees, which match the trees at the Price's existing home, native landscape, oops, sorry. Technology's not one of my things. Oh, thank you. And so underneath the palm trees would be a native coyote bush, which is very low-growing. We trimmed it as a more formal hedge. The side plants, the planters and the plants and the planters are Australian and South African. And the low-growing plants down around the base of the planter walls are also South African. There's a lawn. We have a Guadalupe palms on the bay side or the lagoon side. And then again, the hedge, which potocarpus, which the neighbors' comment was to keep it down at 10 feet, which we can easily do. And we'll change that on our plans. And I'll take, is there any? You want to keep going?
Yeah, just first.
Yeah, any questions anybody have? Oh, we'll get to them.
We'll finish out. Okay. We've got a few seconds left. Let me just bounce through just a couple of other things. Just this was the quick slide that showed the extent of the variances that were being proposed for the trellis piece, which was over on the west side and that a little bit of the pool edge to create the geometry for the pool that was appropriate for kind of therapeutic purposes over here on the east side. I think so, great rendering. We've been working with Tom to really dial this in. I think shows the transitional relationships between the very authentic home that Tom and Gwen have built on the right-hand side of the image in an Italian style to kind of matching yet contemporary, but very authentic, simple building over on the left-hand side, trying to create a good connection between both of the structures. And then here, just a view from the lagoon side, again, showing kind of the similarities in some ways, they feel a little bit friendly to each other, but also distinct in their character. The home that we're proposing is obviously significantly less tall as it's only a single-story, single-story project, but you get the feel for the landscape buffer, a little bit of the pool edge and kind of the planting that Howard just represented at the lagoon side. Perhaps most importantly for tonight, Tom and Gwen have done a great job in coordinating with the town and with neighbors. This exhibit is a representation of a few of the modifications to this proposal that have been discussed literally just hours ago. So we're in real time on this, but this was sort of where things have landed, I think, with all the conversations that have unfolded to date so far. So just to hit on these relatively quickly, we are planning to replace the stone at the advice of others for the stone wall in the front with a stucco, which would match the other stuccos proposed for the project. There is a materials board here, to the extent that's something people want to see. Yeah, sure, if you can kind of bring that around. We were requested and agreed to plant an additional street tree because now that, let me go actually to the first, most important part of this, which is to slide the building over to create a 10-foot setback on the east side of the property. So this offset will now be 10 feet instead of the five-foot setback. So obviously, as the building moves over, we'll, you know, move the curb cut over that created a little bit more space up here. So we have agreed to plant an additional street tree that would happen on either side of the driveway. So it's kind of nice that we'll flank both sides of the property with those olives. We've agreed to obviously maintain 10-foot max mature height hedge of the property. As Howard spoke to, we will pull the pool and spa back and just rework the geometry of the pool to clear the setback area, although the extension was not excessive. That's something that we've been willing to consider. Similarly, for the trellis and patio side. So in the spirit of trying to move this along, we were able to kind of come up with some ideas on how to potentially move this back. And then as this note up here suggests, we are willing to reduce the height of the roof by six inches. So that takes the parapet wall down a little bit. We'll rework our drain planes a bit in order to account for that. And then just a very final note, as Tom mentions, the project's planned to be constructed using both factory-based and site-constructed methods, which has been my specialty for close to 30 years. We work on high-quality technical building projects that involve factory partners. So we'll be planning to bring most of this project already finished to the site. The stone, the roof, the patios, the plantings, obviously these things will be done locally, but the interior of the house can be delivered pretty complete, which simplifies the impact to the community and accelerates the construction process, amongst other benefits. So in short summary, we're excited to be here and look forward to the comments of the community and the commission and hope to move this one along. Thank you, guys. That's the end of this.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now is the time when Commissioners can ask questions of the applicant to help clarify and we'll hold comment until the end. But if you have questions, please, please feel free.
I have a question. So on the material board, I see cedar, is that the fence or?
Trellis?
Oh, it's the trellis.
The trellis and the other exposed woods on the site. So we have a little awning that kind of does a covering at the entryway and then the trellis assembly over the cementitious columns.
Right, okay.
A western teapot.
And did I hear you say that, oh, you're thinking of changing the fence to plaster, I think?
To stucco to match.
And this is the, this is the fence material here?
The stucco on the board, yeah.
This one?
To match the building.
Okay.
Yeah, that would, we would use the same stucco throughout. Okay, thank you.
And would the, would the garage doors and the front door also be the same cedar or?
Correct, or a material that complements the cedar? The intent is that it's a wood, a wood door.
Can I ask, just to make sure I understand the changes that are on the new sheet 14? So essentially moved the house, moved the garage over five feet and moved, did the whole building move over?
The whole building has to move over. So the garage as well as the master suite and that little sort of planter area that wraps around it. So we would have a 10-foot clear setback with no additional obstructions into that area.
Got it. So navigating the issues with the neighbors by basically just moving the whole house over a little bit?
In theory, yes. I think we're going to have to squeeze the house a little bit, but we have some space to do that.
Got it, thank you.
So my question, I'm sorry, just on that same topic. The six inches does not just come off the roof, right? It comes out, I mean, the garage roof, it comes off the kind of the maximum height of the whole project.
Correct. The coping of the parapet wall is continuous around the entire project as currently proposed. So we would lower the entire coping by six inches.
Thanks.
And while we're talking about the envelope of the, of the house, in terms of the, the front setback like towards Peninsula Road, how much farther back is the proposed house from the existing house? Or is it at the same, the same closeness to the, to Peninsula Road?
I think that might be an exhibit that Sammy has that is not in this presentation, but there's an outline of the existing residence. There's, there's the best image that I can show you right now. Five feet is the front of, so this part here. So I think the garage is pretty much.
Largely, largely in the same place.
Yeah. And then I think it has a little, a little jog after that garage, but more or less it's basically at that same five-foot setback.
Great, thank you.
Don, I don't want to forget about you, so if you have questions, please.
No, I did ask mine, so I'm good.
Okay, I have a few questions for you. Can you clarify the color and material of the roof?
So right now, the roof is intended to be a cruel roof TPO, which we are, I believe, working towards a sand color was the current selection that we're working on. So it'll be sort of a tan.
Okay, is that, is that color allowed?
Yes, if it's truly a tan color, white roofs and black roofs require a design review. Yeah, we have had some comments from that material, it being too bright. So we will.
Okay, I think that's something.
Something we can condition that we review prior to building permit issuance.
Yeah, and it's something that can be adjusted darker.
Yeah, we can bring that forward. There's a variety of selections that we can work through.
Good, thank you. And then the skylights as well, those are going to be a tinted glass.
Yeah, there's shades that are motorized underneath those skylights. If there's a tinting requirement, I'm sure we would be happy to accommodate that.
I should know this, I think I'm forgetting. Opaque, sorry, not tinted, that's what I meant, but opaque.
Yeah, they're going to be glass, they'd be opaque glass.
Yeah, okay, okay. So I actually have a couple of questions about landscaping. So the creeping fig, is that meant to actually grow around the columns and trellis to cover them entirely?
Yes.
Okay, so you wouldn't really see structure, you would be seeing greenery is the idea?
The idea, you know, with proper maintenance is you would see a little bit of the column come through and a little bit of the trellis comes through. So you get a sense of the architecture, but it would be softened by the creeping fig.
Okay, thank you. I also had a question about the palm trees. So they were flagged as high fire risks. I was curious if you had plans to switch them out for a different tree. I know that there are palm trees on, next door, so.
So we, we did have that conversation with clients and based on the maintenance routine of the existing palm, the Braheya Armada that the clients have, which is also a high fire risk, that we, we would like to proceed with these, with these Guadalupe palms. I will say that talking to my palm grower, Golden Gate Palms in Richmond, he was quite involved in a lot of the assessments at the Palisades Fire and the Altadena Fire and all of the palms that were high fire, excuse me, high fire risk that were properly maintained went through unscathed.
Is, okay, I have a question. Maybe I'll save my question for later, but we can get back to that.
Can I jump in with another?
Landscaping, yeah.
Landscaping question, hi. Now that the, now that the dwelling is being moved over and there's going to be more space towards 49 Peninsula, is there going to be additional screening of the garbage can enclosure that's over there so that the neighbors can't see it from their upstairs?
We could put a wood enclosure in front of it, put wood doors on it, which we tip. Which.
Okay, I'm just concerned.
But if that were a concern, we often, we often do trash enclosures that have doors.
So switching gears a little bit, the face of the garage, did you explore potentially using another material for the face of the garage to break up some of the stone work? I know that you've made an adjustment to the fence, but were other options looked at?
I mean, we had a conversation about the materiality of the project. It sort of landed on the continuity of stone being pretty integral to the concept for this proposal. So I'm not sure that we felt there was a better solution by switching the garage. It's sort of in line with the rest of the structure. It has a very simple geometry. I think the stone has been really important to these owners as an authentic and high-quality, you know, expression of their commitment to the building process. So we've explored it, but we rejected that that was a better solution.
Okay. Okay. Okay, my, my last two questions just have to do with the, the windows in the primary bedroom. Is there any concern with privacy with the neighbors at 49? There are very large windows and I just wonder if those were looked at carefully? At some point, not right now, at some point in the future, that house is going to be lifted as well. So you're going to be, you're going to be looking at each other. And so I just think it's great to have windows there. I think it's, but maybe adjusting the size on those too? And if there's any rationale for having them that particular size?
I could probably address that with the choice of hedge. So the potocarpus hedge would at maturity get to be 15, 20 feet if we let it. We've chosen to make sure that it stays at 10, but it could, it could be allowed to grow up and actually create a nice privacy screen.
Okay, just something to consider, I mean.
We've spoken with Nate and Heidi about that at length and the windows on that side will be, there's for light, but they will be shaded. As you can see, the same as our house for the last 20 years have been that way. So we have talked about it and we're both comfortable with, with the solution that we have.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
I might also just note that they're additionally setback from the facade. So as we move the building over, they're, you know, they're getting pretty far away from the.
Yeah, I think that helps a lot. I just, that is, that's been a hot corner side, so. Okay, so yeah, please.
So as you've described, the house relies very materially on, on the stone expression. And I see a sample of it here. It looks attractive as a sample, but I'm just, what, could you just describe the installation? Is it individual pieces that are mounted on the house? Is it panelized or what's the character of this stone installation?
This will be naturally quarried stone. So this is not going to be a manufactured product. It's not going to be pre-installed on a board. This is going to involve the craft of masonry in order to assemble this.
And so it's basically a thin-set stone mounted on a brown coat base.
Under four inches of thickness, so that we can.
And is the, is the pattern random or is there a specific pattern to it? Just curious.
No, I think it's a random pattern. It's not intended to be a stacked block or running bond or anything.
Okay, so there's.
Yeah, the dry stack.
There's a fair amount of craft individually set stones.
Be one of the hardest parts of this project, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I won't say this is my last question because it may not be. But one of, one of the things that I expressed this to the Price's when I, when I visited was the age of the home that's, that's being, this being demolished and given its current, current condition. I have concerns that it may have asbestos, lead-based paint, heavy metals, other things that were very common in houses of that age. What precautions are you going to take to the extent that, that there are hazardous materials that you encounter in the demolition?
Well, the city laws and codes will direct how the demolition permit will be issued. A hazardous material inspection is required in order to receive approval by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. It will issue the appropriate numbers that will ultimately allow the project to be demolished. So hazardous materials that are friable, so if they turn into dust, are present on the property, then it will have to be mitigated.
Okay, and what about, what about soil mitigation to the extent that there's heavy metals or lead, et cetera, present in the soil?
It hasn't been evidenced so far. I'm not sure there's anything that would have demonstrated that this would have somehow leached out into the property. I mean, it's just a house. It doesn't seem to have been used for anything nefarious.
It, I don't think it was a dry cleaner.
Yeah, exactly. I don't think they were cooking meth in the basement. So yeah, so I mean, we could do a soil sampling, but the geotactical analysis that we've performed so far, while not intended to produce chemical analysis, hasn't yielded anything that would have made us suspicious about that. The bigger problem is it's on bay mud, that's the challenge.
Yes, we all are, so, thank you.
This is something that might not be part of design review, but out of part curiosity, part design review, the utilities and the mechanical systems, is there anything noise-wise around the side that? that anything is taken note of or that sounds like the pool utilities are in the garage?
They're below grade, correct, the pool utilities are below. The rest of this will probably be roof bounded, not near than setbacks.
Got it, and that space is low, but I assume there's still whatever space you have above the BFE to get mechanical systems above, that's a building question.
Yeah, correct, so any of the, mostly equipment's going to be mounted on the wall in the garage is sort of our plan, you can't do anything below the BFE, so we can't have any equipment below that line. The pool equipment is an independent system that doesn't require the same accommodations.
Thank you.
So I have a, I have a related question on the mechanical, and maybe a very dumb question, but the car lift in the garage, can you compare how loud that is to something else that we would know, which is to say it's, you know, is everybody going to be in the neighborhood going to be saying, oh, there goes the prices, moving your cars around?
We currently, we currently have those in our garage at home and you don't hear it at all, they're hydraulic.
They're hydraulic, okay.
I have one question for you related to the dock repair. So is the bulkhead being replaced as part of that dock addition replacement?
Yes, although it's a reinforcement more than it's like, we can't take it out, so we're putting new sheet piles like.
Okay, but it's being reinforced.
Correct, it's being rebuilt, correct, and that's currently underway and moving through its own hoop jumping.
BLPOA, okay, all right, thank you. Okay, are there any other questions for the applicant? No? Okay. Seeing none, we will open public comment. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? If so, please come up to the podium.
Good evening, thank you for doing a great presentation. My name is Joe Pacula and my wife Caroline and I just moved into our newly renovated and constructed home at 60 Peninsula, which is immediately across the street from the Price's beautiful project. I think we can all agree that it's going to bring a great look and feel to the neighborhood. As expressed in my email to the commission, the concern just is with the massiveness of the building and when the outline of the facade was presented with the existing building, it didn't incorporate the setback of the current property. And so when you walk out of our property and when the neighbors walk out, you're presented with a property that's not as set back in total from the street as it is today with the existing property. And then it also, as has been brought up with the stone, that it has the, there will be a break because if it's going to be actually a masonry project, it's going to have a pattern, but it does have quite a bulk to it. And so the request has been, could the property in height be reduced even further than what was already presented at six introduction? Because the interior ceiling is about 11 and a half feet now. And then that would be in the entire property would be reduced. Request for another six inches to be reduced, so the scale of the house would more match the rest of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, thanks very much.
Nathan Allen, we live next door at 49, so we've, it's been great working with the prices. They listened to our concerns, made the adjustments, and so they've been really great neighbors in that regard. The only one thing that came up in this was the olive tree at the corner of our properties. Just wanted to make sure that the height of that would be kind of more in line with the hedges and the fence that were designed. If it was something that was like 15, 20 feet, then that starts to feel a little intrusive on that corner. But if it's something in line with the hedges, that was just a new change today. So I hadn't had a comment, opportunity to comment about that. But other than that, I think the project looks great, I'm sure it'll be a beautiful addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Gretchen Lang. My family's been living across the street from 51 Peninsula since 1963. So we were very delighted, we were delighted to see the plans and we're delighted to see the improvements that are going to be made at this property. Of course, when the story poles went up, it was a bit of a shock as it often is when you have to take into account the FEMA regulations. As Joe has already said, I think our concern is that the current property, although it's, you know, so there's not changing the setback from the, from the street and, and they're not really changing the height of the garage, but they're building, they're continuing that height all the way across with the ADU. So you have really a considerably massive structure that is kind of massive and monotonous. The current structure, I think, you know, the really ugly garage, but then there's a variety of heights that allows air and light to come through from that southwest exposure. So that's what we're losing with that, and so I think that's been our concern. It creates kind of a huge box and also with the, with the material thing being used, it creates almost a kind of, you know, it's almost like a castle-like look to it. And if you go and look at the height, you know, with, with the story poles, it's kind of overwhelming. So I do appreciate the concessions that the prices have made. I think they're very well willing to work with the neighbors and I very much appreciate that. I wondered if there is any way to set it back even further because I think that that would help a little bit or and or change some of the, the vertical heights. I don't know whether that's possible, but it would certainly help with the mass, in my opinion, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Heidi Biaski, I live at 49 with my husband Nathan and we've been here four years, we love it and it's been great working with the price. And we love their existing home, it's actually my favorite home on the lagoon. So we're thrilled that they're going with a similar style, we really like their aesthetics and we appreciate that you guys moved the house for us because that was a huge issue with the 18 windows we have on that side. And but what I wanted to come up here and say is pushing it back further, we would be opposed to that because that would even block more of our house and our view of the lagoon that we have, that's, you know, is being taken away. It would be more drastic for us. So we had asked that you do not push it further back, that would be really, really bad for us. And just echo the comment on the olive tree. So sorry, I said the tree is fine, but I just don't want anything blocking the light there. And so if it could be sort of 10 feet, I'm not that particular about the tree, but just something that's not too large to block the light into the, you know, the area that we have on the side. So but other than that, I think we're very supportive and excited to have you guys back to us.
Thank you.
My name is Dana Hamburger and I've lived on Peninsula Road since 1976. I've seen lots of houses come and go. I myself have unquestioned how far a garage should be back from the curb cut. Everything on the odd number side of the street is kind of closer to the curb cut than the houses on the, on my side of the street, the even numbers. Both the Cersei House, which is the Price's house, and the Matthews' house are both lot and a half. So that needs to be taken into consideration and understood. I've seen some of these projects kind of choke our neighborhood for years plus. And here, these people are going to do something new and creative. You know, their houses are going, their house is going to be built before it comes in and gets set on the foundation. I think that, that, that you guys and you guys out here should appreciate that. You know, there are so many, so many days, Monday through Friday, it's hard to find a parking place on the street. And it's because some of these projects never end. These people want the project to start and end and it wants, and they want it to be something for us in Belvedere to really look at and think about and appreciate. I better sit down now, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom?
I see no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. So we will close the public comment and I will bring it back to the commission for discussion. So I had actually sort of planned on outlining a few areas that I felt warranted some more discussion tonight among the commissioners. But a lot of the sort of relevant pertinent issues have largely been addressed by the changes that you have come with tonight and the new plan. So, which are great, so really appreciate that. So unless there are any questions or concerns, I think we can go into deliberations and commentary. So are there any questions about changes that have been proposed? Okay. Alex, would you like to start us off tonight?
Sure, thank you, Ashley. I spent a fair, well, I should first say, I visited the site. I also talked to Mr. Price this weekend and I spent a fair amount of time thinking about the proposal. Some of the remarks are perhaps not directly applicable in light of the new plan, but I think I do want to touch on a couple of things. There's some new dynamics going on in the city. One of them is the FEMA regulation to raise the ground floor, which of course is going to have impact on, on the mass of the house and that's just a requirement. Interestingly, it can make a one-story house, you know, three quarters of the height of an old-fashioned two-story house like is what's there. And I think that's where some of the neighbors started getting concerned because we're used to having, you know, these kind of setbacks at the higher elevations. And so that aspect of the plan or that concern, I think, has been more than adequately addressed by the movement of the house, you know, closer into the center of the lot and expanding the setback to the adjacent neighbor. It's fortunate, this is a, this is a rather large or wider lot than normal. And at the same time, the concerns regarding the variances facing the lagoon have also been able to be addressed. So I think those are all extremely helpful moves. But I just mentioned this in a general context because we've, we've dealt with this on several projects. I think it was 322 San Rafael that came through here a month or two ago. Was similar, I actually recommended they expand the setback. It was a house that had to raise to FEMA level, had even taller ground floor ceilings, 12 foot. And they were able to set the property back a little bit further from the property line and address the neighbors' concerns. So these are going to be ongoing things, I think, that we're, we'll be looking at and dealing with on a case-by-case basis. The, the other thing that also impacts the house is there's two ADUs here. The ADUs are not really under the purview of this planning commission, so I appreciate Gretchen Lang's comments, but I don't think there's anything that we can say here that relates to that. It's really going to be ministerial review with the staff, the city. So these are new dynamics, I think, that we're all getting used to. And that's the context that we're looking at this project in. As it relates to the, the materiality of the house, I think that the, the change in the fence at the street is extremely helpful. I think the double layering of stone did give it a kind of monolithic character. Part of my thought was perhaps the garage could also be in plaster. I'm just going to say that as a thought that you could think about. I wouldn't make it a condition at this point because I think changing the fences is very helpful and just to get some variety in the materials here. And in my little inquisition of your designer, I think that the proposed stone is really going to be a very high-quality material and an asset to the neighborhood. A couple of final thoughts. You know, the palm tree approach has been a discussion topic in the planning commission. I'm kind of middle of the road on it, although I prefer vegetation. It's perhaps more native-looking, so I'll leave it to my fellow planning commissioners to comment on that. And final thought is, there was a note in our packet from the staff regarding the amount of lighting out on the trellis. And so I did kind of a review of that. There's a kind of two layers of lighting on the lagoon and the northwest side. There's wall sconces and downlights above. I do think that they could be reduced. I might like to add a condition that the applicant worked with the staff to reduce that lighting. I just did a simple layout myself, I thought it could be reduced by about half, but I don't want to specify a number, I think that some reduction could be in order there, so I might like to add that into the resolution.
Final landscape and lighting, we'll come back to the chair for a review, just, yeah, thank you.
So I will, actually, I feel like with these changes, I would be able to make the findings for the project tonight.
Thank you. Jenna?
Well, unfortunately, Commissioner Sidell stole a whole lot of my script that I was going to read. But I was also going to speak about the fact that, that, you know, the FEMA regulations really are changing the landscape of every property that we, that we have on the, on the, on the lagoon. Every, every house has to be, has to be raised to the extent that it's, the extent that it's renovated. And unfortunately, that's the, that's the, that's the world that we're living in. I do appreciate that the initial plan that the prices had was lower and smaller than it could have been with the, with the existing, with the existing parameters and that you've made it even, even lower and you've moved it over to accommodate and be kind to your, be kind to your neighbors. I also appreciate the changing of the material of the, of the front wall so that in addition to having a smaller, a smaller footprint at the, at the front, that there will be a greater variety of materials, not just a different in the difference in the coloration of the, of the, of the stone at the front. And also that there will be both green screening and also, and also, and also fencing to give, to give more privacy, both to your family and to, and to the, and to the neighbors. And then. And then I do not have an issue with the palm, with the palm trees, given that we live in Calif, in California. I feel like even though they weren't native to begin with, here we are. So, so with, with that being, with that being said, I can make the findings.
Thank you. Don?
Sure. And I'll be able to make the findings tonight. I think that the main thing I was looking for was a willingness to accommodate the concerns of the, the next door neighbor. That's generally what I always look for first is the, are the, can the adjacent neighbors live with it? So glad to see that the project has moved over. Part of me, I don't know the requirements of a double decker garage. So I, I don't, can't really opine as to whether the garage could be lower. Just as an aesthetic, I think from the street, maybe the, it does look like it has a little higher forehead than ideal. But with that said, I'm certainly not going to stand on that. And I, again, I appreciate the applicants willing to work and meet with lots of neighbors. And I certainly appreciate the experimental nature of it all. It'll be fun to watch.
Thank you. Justin?
I want to thank the applicant for a really thorough and exemplary package, first and foremost. I think the clarity, the drawings helps exponentially to understand the context as well as appreciate the time and attention to the package and its representation of dealing with the neighbors, the design, the context in general. I echo my fellow commissioners and can make the findings.
Thank you. So I just want to start off by saying I really commend the applicants for all the work that they have done to, not just to communicate with your neighbors, but to gain support from neighbors on this project. We don't always see that kind of outreach and openness to being flexible and then further pivoting and to a new designer approach. And I think when it does happen, it always leads to a better project. And I think that is very true in this instance. And I just want you to know how much we appreciate your partnership and just being very reasonable. So thank you. As my fellow commissioners have said, I think that these FEMA projects are some of the most difficult projects we have to evaluate. I was prepared for a much more challenging discussion tonight. But I was very pleased to see these changes come through late in the day, which I think addresses most of what I was concerned about. And I think the adjustments, as others have said, that you've made to just how the structure has been sighted on the lot are, are huge and will just really improve, I think, not just their side of the property, but just here and the, the entire flow of the property. I also agree, the change of material on the fence is a really great choice. I had the same question about the garage face material. I think it might be worth looking into. I don't know that I would make that a condition of approval, but something to think about. It does have a very fortress-like appearance and I understand wanting a fortress. I feel like we all need a fortress these days. But you may actually come out with something that's even better by, by softening just that side of it. It will provide some visual relief to some of the comments about the, the street facing appearance, just to break it up a little bit. So just something to contemplate on the, on the garage side. This is obviously a site that needs a, a lot of love. And I think this home is going to be a huge improvement for the entire neighborhood. There are some very strong design elements here. I really appreciate that you've kept it to a single story and you've used a flat roof. I think that's when a FEMA home can do that. It really makes a huge difference for the entire neighborhood. I think the, the design, the, the earth tones and use of natural materials are very much in line with their code. I think it fits in nicely with Belvedere, which is actually a very eclectic mix of styles. So we discussed the windows and I will leave it be as the neighbors, I think, are fine with them. So I think they're fine. I think the amount of glazing is reasonable for, for the size of house. So a lot of my comments now have to do with landscaping, which will come back for final approval. But generally speaking, I think the landscape plan does fit well with this more sort of modern pared back aesthetic. I really appreciate that you're proposing greenery to cover the trellises and the columns. I think that's a really nice touch and it's going to go a long way to softening the home from the water side. And it will just be really beautiful. There are a few places where I think more planting would be great. And it would be really nice to see planting of various heights. You've got a lot of kind of lower planting going on. So it will also help, I think, to break up some of the stone and concrete elements you have. Particularly along the infinity pool, you have a kind of a concrete wall there. And so something planted along there to cover it would be great. Typically, when trees come out in Belvedere, we like to see a two for one replacement plan. So by that metric, you should have at least 10 trees on the property of a good size. So I think that you also, we also love seeing trees on the water side. I know you've got the palm trees there. Those don't do a whole lot to provide cover for the house. So again, maybe looking at some trees that are lower in height that can add additional screening. And I really do think for you to be out there enjoying the pool and just having so a few more trees there will help with privacy and just as a noise buffer. And then the other thing I, I think would be helpful, if you could plant that hedge early in construction, just to give it some time to grow and provide a screen for the neighbors next door. So they're not, you know, dealing with all of the construction noise, if that's possible. I think that would be great to do. So from my perspective, I, I think it's a very strong design. And again, with all the, the changes that you have made and outlined, I can support the project and make the findings. One last comment, I agree on the, the exterior lighting. I forgot to mention that. So again, that will come back for final review, but you could probably cut it in half. I think you've got close to 70 fixtures. Most of the lighting in the trellis would need to come out. But that can be fine tuned later. So I think it's, I think it's a successful project. Thank you. Okay, can I please have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution granting design review to construct a new single family residence and attached garage at six, sorry, 51 Peninsula Road. And I, I guess we should say subject to further review of landscape and lighting by the
Do we, yeah.
How do we do that?
Yeah, there were a lot of changes made. So do we need to actually
I have, I can, I have a draft. If you'd like to hear what I have so far. So the motion would be to approve design review for the project located at 51 Peninsula Road with the following conditions. The necessity for the variance is removed. The left side yard setback is 10 feet. An additional tree is planted at the front property line at, or the front of the property on the left hand side. The stone wall is constructed in stucco. All of these are reflected on the amended sheet 14, which is on the dais for you tonight and available for the public on the counter.
Do we need to specifically ask for a two for one replacement plan on the, for the trees or is that again, just subject to chair approval?
That's subject, we have a, an additional condition of approval for a final landscape plan and lighting plan to be reviewed by the chair and the planning commission and planning staff.
Okay, I think that
Thank you. I don't think I could have said it better.
Okay, so can I get, can we get a second?
I will, I will second your motion.
To do a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Watson?
Hi.
Commissioner Seidel?
Yes.
Commissioner Botros?
Yes.
Commissioner Shinsky?
Hi.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. Thank you.
Do we need a separate resolution to the demolition?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's coming.
Yeah.
So motion to adopt the resolution granting demolition permit to demolish the existing 4,282 square foot residence at 51 Peninsula Road.
I will second your motion.
Commissioner Botros?
Hi.
Commissioner Seidel?
Hi.
Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Hi.
Commissioner Shinsky?
Hi.
Thank you.
In motion three, recommend to the city council approval of a revocable license for improvements located in the public street right of way at 51 Peninsula Road.
I will second your motion.
Commissioner Botros?
Hi.
Commissioner Seidel?
Hi.
Commissioner Watson? Commissioner Shinsky?
Hi.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. Okay, congratulations to the applicant. I now adjourn the meeting. Thank you.